I'd like to call the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting for June 14th, 2011 to order. Is Pastor Marcy Miller here? Prayer will be led by Commissioner Spataro. Thank you Commissioner, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please guide our deliberations as we make decisions regarding our community. Help us to make our decisions informed and just, and please bless us and guide us and protect us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner. Roll call please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
May we have the consent agenda read please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the city commission meeting that was held on Tuesday, May 24th, 2011. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Loan for street projects, finance, summary request. The city is fortunate enough to receive many federal and state grants for street improvements. Accepting these grants allows us to leverage local resources and get far more work done than would be possible using local resources alone. We are at a point where we risk losing grant funds due to a declining local street resources, including CDBG. This request is to enter into a $2 million 10-year loan with fifth third bank in order to provide funds needed to match anticipated grants over the next two to three years. Staff had considered issuing MTF bonds for this purpose, however, the issuance cost would be quite high at $57,000. Also, the bonding process is very time-sensitive, requiring preparation of official statements and numerous other documents. Staff surveyed the three major banks having offices within the city to determine if they were willing to do a 10-year loan with the city. Two of the most, two of the banks indicated they would do such a loan, and fifth third had the most favorable terms. The city's financial advisor, RW Baird, ran comparisons of the two transactions and advises that the bank loan is the preferred avenue. It is worth noting that the advisor would have received a substantial fee if MTF bonds were issued. Staff recommendation, authorize the mayor, city attorney, and city staff to prepare and execute necessary loan documents. Approval of the fair housing agreement with Muskegon County, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, the cities of Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, Norton Shores, and the county of Muskegon are entering into an agreement with the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to conduct fair housing testing in the county of Muskegon per the recommendation of the 2009 analysis of impediments report. Staff recommendation, to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign. Memorandum of Understanding Justice Assistance Grant, Public Safety. Summary request, the director of public safety requests that the commission authorize the director and the city manager to enter into an agreement with the city of Muskegon Heights and Muskegon County in regards to the dispersment of the 2010 justice assistance grant. The money in this grant is shared by the three entities. The $34,698 in this grant will be utilized for the prosecution of city ordinance cases primarily dealing with neighborhood issues. Staff recommendation, approval of this request. Approval of the use and maintenance of city-owned property at 325 Jackson Avenue by the Jackson Hill Neighborhood Association, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, to approve the use and maintenance of the city-owned property located at 325 Jackson Avenue for community garden. The property is buildable, and the city would retain the right to sell the property with the Jackson Hill Neighborhood Association having time to remove the garden prior to any sales. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and maintenance agreement.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only for clarification, C.
Any other items? Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read minus C.
Have it support?
Support.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the consent agenda as read less item C. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C.
Thank you. In reading my information, it seems that the dates were wrong.
Commissioner, we need a motion.
And, and I was wondering if that was a misprint or, just want to make sure that is clear.
The term is July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, and you're correct, there was a, there was a typo in the original, but a revised document was sent out to you. That's correct.
Thank you so much. I just wanted that clarified because I know we couldn't go back to June 2011 on the 30th. Thank you. It's clarified, it's been changed, so I'm pleased.
Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the fair housing agreement with Muskegon County and the other entities as described. Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the agreement with the fair housing agreement with Muskegon County. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, item A please.
2011-2012 Budget Finance Department. Summary request, the city commission may take action to adopt the 2011-2012 budget with whatever changes or adjustments deemed necessary. City ordinance requires the budget be adopted by the second regular city commission meeting in June. Staff recommendation, receive public comments upon closing the public hearing. The city commission may decide to adopt the budget.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? I know we discussed this at length last night at the work session. Commissioner Spataro?
Seeing as we're all looking at each other, I would move that we approve the 2011-2012 --
Public hearing.
Sorry.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item? Commissioner Spataro?
Sorry about that. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the 2011-2012 budget.
Second.
Thank you Commissioners. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Shepherd, to close the public hearing and approve the 2011-2012 budget. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business. Item A please.
Final Determination of the 2011-2012 CDBG Home Grants and Submission of Action Plan to HUD, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to make a final determination for the 2011-2012 CDBG home grants based on HUD's allocation and to allow community and neighborhood services to have the 2011-2012 action plan available for comment for the next 10 days. Staff recommendation, approve the 2011-2012 CDBG home budget based on HUD's allocation and allow community and neighborhood services to have the 2011-2012 action plan available for comment for the next 10 days.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the 2011-2012 CDBG home budget based on the final administration recommendations on the HUD allocation and allow the community and neighborhood services to have the action plan available for comment over the next 10 days.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the final determination for the 2011-2012 CDBG home grants and submission of the action plan to HUD based on the final administration recommendation. Mr. Spataro?
Not really question, but just to verify, this is in fact a 16% reduction in the allocation as originally presented based on the budget actions at, at the federal government level over the course of the last few months?
Yeah, approximately that, but about $175,000 than what we originally anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B please.
Application for Special Liquor License American Red Cross, Public Safety. Summary request, the American Red Cross has submitted an application for a special license for beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises for July 15th and 16th, 2011. This license is for a beverage service area to be located at Hot Rod Harley Motorcycle, 149 Shoreline Drive. The foundation meets all of the requirements for the special license with the exception of the request for spirits. Commission policy dictates that any special license request which includes spirits must be considered and approved by the body. Staff recommendation, staff has no recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Seeing that there are no questions, I would move that we approve the application for the special liquor license request for the American Red Cross.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to approve the application for the special liquor license for the American Red Cross. Mr. Lippin? Please step forward, yeah. It won't hurt, it'll only take about 45 minutes of your time, and we appreciate you donating blood to the American Red Cross. Would you like to give us a little rundown as to what you plan to do as far as spirits are concerned?
Yes. First of all, I'm Tim Light and Executive Director of the American Red Cross. We're located at 313 West Webster, downtown Muskegon. We're partnering with Hot Rod Harley and Citadel Radio to program a event during nighttime. And that will be beverage tent, so it'll include some music. And what we're requesting, that goes a little bit beyond the normal American licenses, is to do the thing that they commonly call slushies, and includes alcohol, but it's a, it's a, it's a frigid drink, it's cold drink that gets churned up, and it's kind of been done around, I know Summer Celebration does, and some of the other events do. It seems to be a hot trend in summertime, and we'd like to go off of that.
Do you have a liquor of choice? I mean, will it be, well, I mean, will it be a rum-flavored drink? And I know in the past with Summer Celebration has partnered with Southern Comfort, or is this, are you looking at a?
There's two flavors. One is a strawberry daiquiri, and one is a margarita. So, ice is mixed with margarita mix, a little bit of alcohol, and slushy. Special machines are brought in town to create the slushies.
And they're pre-portioned?
Pre-portioned, yes.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would you care to have a cookie and something to drink?
Care to drink a glass?
Not as often as they call, I guess, but yes, thank you. Item C please.
Removal of Street Lights in the Nims and Campbell Neighborhoods, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Consumers Energy to remove streetlights in the areas of Nim and Campbell Neighborhoods. Consumers Energy has offered to remove over 30 mid-block streetlights at no cost to the city as part of their upcoming system improvements. The estimated annual savings to the city is over $6,000. Staff recommendation, to authorize staff to enter into agreement with Consumers Energy to remove the mid-block streetlights using the following procedure. All major street intersections with another major street and/or local street must have a minimum of two fixtures. All local street intersections have, shall have a minimum of one light fixture. The spacing between fixtures on major streets, non-boulevard type, shall be no more than 400 feet, and for a boulevard, no more than 300 feet. The spacing between fixtures on local street shall be no more than 500 feet. The engineer will use his or her discretion and best judgment to override the above for geometric and unusual alignment such as curves and/or obscure physical structures.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Consumers Energy to receive, to remove the mid-block streetlights in Nims and Campbell Neighborhood using the aforementioned procedures. Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to approve staff to enter into an agreement with Consumers Energy to remove the mid-block streetlights in the Nims and Campbell Neighborhoods based on the procedure that was read as part of the works here. Any, Commissioner Spataro?
Just one question. I mean, it's about safety, it's about what we can afford to do. The price that we're paying for streetlights has just skyrocketed over the last few years. Are we making any progress at all with Consumers Energy, which actually owns the streetlights, regarding upgrading to more energy-efficient fixtures like LEDs so that we can, you know, not have to go through this process?
We are making some progress with Consumer Energy. In fact, we had to do it, obviously, like two or three weeks, where they updated the maps, the end of the way to our maps and outlines. We used to leave, we have, according to the buildings that we're receiving right now, we have to pay $100 streetlights, meaning we have better than we function. And they've gone, they went through all that, they came in with maps about three weeks ago. We modified some, and we moved such as the ones that we removed on Pine Street, Terrace Street, Ruston Avenue. We updated those maps, and they were supposed to give back to us within, by July, by November 15th, to the updated map. And hopefully that will be, how many streetlights do we have actually to update? As far as updating to, or upgrading to LEDs, we've looked at that now, Consumer does have a rate for LEDs, unfortunately, the cost involved in replacing some of those, the pixels that we have, the organization itself would have to pay for the upgrade itself, which we believe at least this time is quite costly, and is not what the savings that we're going to generate from that.
So, they'll pay me $30 to upgrade my fridge, but they won't help us out upgrading the lights that are costing us $750,000 a year?
No.
Okay.
That's for the, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Because of that, the way that the cover sheet was written, it talks about the streets or mid-block streets, and I think it's worth mentioning that there is one area in the Nims neighborhood that is really not a street, but we have two lights in an alley behind Wayne's Deli that we, that's why the disco ball that can come out. Just because they mentioned streets, I mean, I didn't want to be lost in the.
They're not at an intersection, they're within the alley. Any other discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D please.
Special Event Request, Muskegon Summer Celebration Annual Event, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, Muskegon Summer Celebration has filed a special event application for their annual festival to be held in downtown Muskegon, June 30th through July 9th, but no events on July 5th. Some of their requests require city commission approval. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with the listed conditions.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend to, the approval of the special event request from the Muskegon Summer Celebration Annual Event.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Shepherd, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the special event request from Muskegon Summer Celebration. And, is there any discussion?
Well.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yeah, we know that we're down to eight days, but it can be a incredible eight days from the 11-day event, but we still look forward to the, all the fun, the activities that happens in the downtown when the Summer Celebration is in one, I think. It's to Joe Austin there for the effort, and also our chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you Commissioner, any other comments? Roll call please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, Rutterman Creek Project Presentation.
Yes, there is a short presentation that needs to be on the screen.
Your Honor? Commissioner Carter?
I appreciate the fact that Rutterman Creek wants to make a presentation to us. I feel if we have these from here on out, maybe we should do that at a work session as opposed to a city commission meeting. Because I just think it gets more, it's more detailed and we get more out of it if we get it at a work session.
We don't disagree with the Commissioner. The organization that, that wants to present wanted to do it on a day in which the meeting is televised.
To reach them, to target them.
Otherwise, we would, we would do it at a work session. So, we're trying to accommodate them as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, and I wanted to mention that Commissioner Ben Cross is here from our, one of our Muskegon County Commissioners, and we appreciate him being here. All right. Let's move on. We'll need for you to give your name and address.
Do you need some lights on first? This one.
Hi, Sarah Dan. I'm with Grand Valley State University, Ringhead Water Research Institute at 740 West Shoreline Drive in the city of Michigan. I just want to talk about the studies to support Rutterman Creek implementation ready to the MDL, which is the integrative assessment project, and we'll get into what all that means in just a minute. We also work with the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Environmental Quality, the State Council of Government, and the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development. This project is a $247,000 grant funded through the EPA, which is a great waste restoration initiative. Its goal is to collect information to help the DEQ develop a full maximum daily load for biota in the city. And it's supposed to be completed by 2013. So, what exactly is the full maximum daily load? Well, it's similar to a diet plan for a water body. So, it's basically, it tells you what type of chemicals or fluids you can put in the water body and still maintain the quality of health for the biota. And so, you know, like a person, if you have too much to eat, you want to be put on a diet, so this is what it does for the water body. And it also does what's called best management practices. So, it kind of, it's sort of like an exercise program for a water body. So, it sort of helps. So, water use for running creeks, well, it's been here for quite some time due to the great anatolics, which are the mineral organisms that live in the bottom of the creek. So, because of this, this is the problem, also what's called sedimentation or sedimentation. So, what happens is too much water runs into the system, it flushes and erodes the stream drain, and then deposits the sediment into the gravel and areas where the vessels live, and these are where the exer are deposited. And this is caused by what's called flash inadality. So, what's happening here is the dotted line right here is the natural stream system, where it's, there's trees surrounding the stream, and there's soil that we can infiltrate in, the rain is infiltrating through the soil. So, it's able to infiltrate before it moves into the stream, so it's not flowing to the stream, or an urbanized watershed during a storm event. It's the impurities services, like the harness services, the roads, and things like that, and those directly surround the stream. And when this happens, the rushing stream just down there goes through the stream, and causes massive erosion. Like here, the North Branch up here, the Black Forest, we have the river. And when that happens, it causes everything that it erodes down, thither down into the stream, causing siltation and sedimentation out there. And this is due to the impervious cover all around the stream. So, right here is the stream, and now the orange and the red, the orange is the residential area, and it's about 54% of the watershed. The red is the institutional area, and then the gray is the industry. So, that makes up more than 25% impervious cover. The headwaters of the creek, these are all strong drains, so this is all like the water forming impervious cover, and flushing it right out into the stream during a storm event. So, what we're going to do is sample in these locations, and we're going to collect various parameters. We're going to collect flow data, the transducer, which was flow over fifteen minutes. And this is during base flow, and we're also going to look at the different sediment flow through the stream, and the bedrock, which is along the back of the stream, as well as oxygen in the stream. So, the different areas, we're going to do this during base flow, which when it's dry out, and also during the big storm events, or massive storm events throughout the whole storm. So, we have different areas, there are storm sewers areas that we're looking at, we're monitoring the storm sewer, tracking all of this as well. And then, sorry, you can't see much of it, but these are the transducers. We have three in the West Branch, one in the North Branch, and two in the Main Branch. So, what we do with this data, we collect the data and we want to share it with everybody in the community. This is called integrated assessment. We want to get the community involved, so they know what's going on in the watershed. And so, taking that a natural science, the data we collect, the policy and our decision makers, as well as the community will help make informed decisions based on the management and question, which is particularly appropriate hydrologic and stuff targets for a creek. And what best management practices should be implemented to get to these targets. So, that's kind of like the side plan and the master plan program. So, during this process, we have our stakeholders committee, who helps us to get different areas where we can collect this data and talk to different groups and get feedback from the community as well, because we're not just here to tell you what's going on, we need our community to tell us as well. And so, the objectives are to sample the key water quality parameters, develop key targets for the sediment, modeling the hydrology to determine the flow targets, as well as identifying critical subbasins, because each treaty target has its own subbasins. And we want to make sure that the MP's that are hopefully going to be put in will be most beneficial for the area, and then involve the stakeholders. With all of this, we're going to use that to monitor the information and document progress towards producing beneficial use of the current essentials, the greater effort from the area that's being used. So, in doing that, it doesn't just stop at the data, we need to make sure we do things the community does their part as well, and that's through the best management practices. So, a few ideas here, there's a ton of best management practices, but this is the permanent pavement, you can't see the bottom part, but the water's flowing right through it. So, it's really neat technology. There's also rainwater harvesting, where you have rain barrels that harvest the water from the rooftops of buildings, and you can water your plants and things like that. And then there's detention ponds, where in parking lots, instead of going directly into the storm sewer, you're going to collect them into a pond. So, there's a lot that can be done, and we just want to make sure everybody's aware of this project. So, with that, we have all these things on our, on our website, so if you want any more information, it's up there. Or, you have any questions?
In the presentation that I attended, you described the source of water for the Rutterman Creek flow, to those far-right managers at the state.
We did initially think that, and then through the State Council of Government, we worked in on that end of that, and everything east of here, east of there, and that was the main thing. So, just because the, the raindrops actually have their own natural.
In the presentation that I attended, you described the source of water for the Rutherford Creek flow to those far upstate neighborhoods, at least the suburbs.
We did initially think that, and then through the State Council of the Government, we were thinking that it ended at the end of that dam. Everything east of there is east of that dam. So just because the rainfall actually has its own relative valuation determining the flow.
So you're referring to the volume of water, the source of where the water's coming from, and the contaminants saturated?
Not necessarily. The contaminants in question is the actual sediment itself. They're not necessarily contaminated, they're just the sediment. So we are measuring how much the concentration, as well as the spend and stock of sediment. And then we remember how much the rainfall has entered. So we know how much is coming down, and then we see how much is actually moving through the stream.
Are there pending, you have those cooling ponds, you know, you're working on now, anywhere?
I'm not quite sure. I think that's another thing that our stakeholders hopefully help us with, is to see where exactly the APMs they're being practiced right now. I know that there's a lot of regulations for certain things that is out, that's what they're happening.
Is there a way to figure out, you know, if there's, if there's, you know, how many of the funds there? If we've got, you know, if there's something, if there's any place to go on there.
Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Back to the agenda. Is there any other business commissioners that you have?
Thank you.
All right, public participation, we do have some that have put in a request, so I'll take care of them first. Harold Keel, maybe?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your handwriting's better than mine, but it's still difficult to read.
On the President Campbell's view of the situation. Yeah. Let you know what I'm talking about.
I can pass them down. Sure. Okay. I need for you to give your name and address, too, please.
Okay. You want me to give my name and address?
Please.
Harold Keel, 2111 Dollar Street. I know we've had a lot of things changing lately, especially with the neighborhoods, and they're cutting back on our officers and stuff. But a couple of years ago, there was this program started, we worked with the police officers, and it's every third Wednesday of the month, community officers on Sherman at the celebrated community church. And that's where people can go and talk to the officer. And we've got calls from different people that want to talk about certain things, and we send them down there. Now, this takes care of Campbell's Field and Glen Side neighborhoods, too. And I'm not, you know, I don't like to see this get cut, and this is going to get cut. And alls I ever hear is, we should have more communications between the public and the police. And here, we got something that's been working, and I don't feel it should be cut. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you have a little discussion on that?
When I met with the neighborhood associations last week, we talked about these changes. I know that was one of the things that came up, were some of these neighborhood office hours and stuff that we've established and had in place for a while. And what advised them, I said, for now, while we're literally in a state of flux and making some very quick changes, at this point, we're probably not going to be able to meet those needs initially. However, once those area neighborhood officers get settled, we will go back and during the week, can to reestablish those neighborhood meeting hours. As it stands now, with a very large undertaking that we have, we just can't do it. We do have, I mentioned a number of ways they can connect with us. Denny Powers, our neighborhood coordinator, is going to become much more involved than Denny has been. We haven't been able to pull Denny out to do some programming things. Denny's going to have to come back in and do some more field work. But we will reestablish those at some point, realistically, probably not until we get through the summer, until we kind of get all this settled down, that it does settle with these changes. But I totally agree, those were, those have been very beneficial to us, and we will reestablish those at some point in the near future.
Can I add something, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I feel something like this, once you cut it, it's going to take a long time to come back. And it's only two hours a month, and it don't have to be the neighborhood officer, it could be other officers. Somebody just get in there for the next few months, so we can, but don't cut it out. Because once something like this cuts, it takes a long time to get back.
Mr. Keel, I understand your concern. My suggestion would be that you come back to a city commission meeting, first city commission meeting in September, and we'll discuss it at that point in time, based on the recommendations from the chief, that'll take a few months to do that.
It's supposed to be cut for now until September.
Correct. All right, thank you. Sean Tate?
Sean Tate, 287 McLaughlin Avenue. I purchased a house, 287 McLaughlin Avenue, in October of '09. And at the tax sale, it's taken me 18 months to rehab it. I finally am in it. I got my occupancy permit March 29th. We've been living in it now. And I have been down to talk to Tony Malatziotes, and he's helped me, and he's talked to me about buying the parcel next to my house. And he told me that I had to talk to Mike Franzick about it, because that's zoning. I've been working on this parcel, because it's a non-buildable lot. And at that time, when I first talked to him, Hope Mitchell was in that position. And I had my hopes up, I've had ideas about, you know, what I can do with this lot. I would like to fence it in, I would like to put a garden in there, and most of all, to keep my dogs safe. I have two small dogs, and they're not extremely friendly. And the house at 287, I have drawn kind of like a map here of what the block looks like. My house is the only house on the block. If you kind of want to pass this around, you kind of have an idea.
It's 287 West Street.
It's McLaughlin. This one, right here is my house. As you look at it, the description of it is that I went down to talk to Mike Franzick, and he has told me now that right across the street, as you see on that little diagram there, 288 McLaughlin is the exact same setup as my house at 287. It's directly across the street. 288 McLaughlin has purchased the corner lot, just like I have, on the corner of Pine and McLaughlin. The lot I want is on the corner of Pine and McLaughlin as well, right next to me. It's a non-buildable lot. Mike Franzick told me that I cannot purchase that lot, because now I have a driveway directly next to my house, just like 288 does, it's on that diagram. They park in their driveway, just like I do. Now, he told me that I cannot purchase this lot next to me, because then it would become my front yard. Either Pine would be a front yard, and the McLaughlin would become a front yard. And that is not legal. He said that I could not purchase it, because it would make it a front yard, and I cannot park anywhere, and I cannot have this lot, and it is not, and he will not sell me this lot. I do not understand this. My case is that if 288 McLaughlin has purchased that lot, just like I want to, and make it a homestead, there is no parking behind the house, because the house is on the property line, just like it's drawn there. The lot behind me is a buildable lot. I asked him if I could buy that one, so I could build a garage. He said, no, because it's only purchasable if you build a house, not a garage. I asked if I could buy the alley lot. And the alley, the city owns the alley and the lot next to it, he said it had to be vacated before I could do it, and if I did that, I would have to pay for it to be vacated, then I would have to take out the driveway, the present driveway, and my parking space to move it over to the parking or the alley, and then maybe I could buy 1310. And this is insane. So I waited two years nearly to purchase this corner lot, so I could put in a garden, fence it in, and I would like to know what your opinion is of this. I would just, I simply want a bigger yard, so that I can have a garden and a place to put it, and, you know, and simply, you know, I have a humongous house, I'm a homeowner again, I love the city, and I want to be here. My question to you is, would you rather have this property piece, that's a non-buildable lot, on your tax rolls and lose money? Or would you rather have someone that wants to do something with it, make it something that's theirs? Make it beautiful, do something with it, or have your people mow it? You know, would you rather do it, or would you rather have someone who cares, take care of it? That's my question to you. So, you know, I don't know if you're giving me an answer or what, but he said that's...
I'm going to call on Commissioner Spataro here, but I am going to say that Mr. Franzick is an employee of the city, and he's only telling you what our rules are, bases, the ordinance and stuff. So I would hope that, at least you don't personally hold it against Mike for just passing on the information that he's required to relate to you as it is written now. Commissioner Spataro.
Yeah, I heard a couple of different requests in there, and I think the primary issue was the corner lot adjacent to the property. When you have a corner lot, there are certain rules to apply. I'm not sure what the underlying issues are, and as far as the alley and buying additional properties, I suspect that we would not get a very, a very helpful discussion tonight with that. And so I would ask that we refer this to the manager, to report back to us on what the status is, and whether or not she can be accommodated. I mean, buying an adjacent unavailable lot seems very reasonable, and I'm sure it does to all of us. So I think it would be best to get a report on what actually is going on, and what she can do, and how we can help her with your request. And hopefully we can get that within the next day or two.
I so agree.
All right. I think I have your information here, so we'll have the city manager get in contact with you, and follow up with us, okay?
Yeah, you want to keep that diagram, or you want me to...
Do you want us to keep it, or did you say you want it?
If you'd like to keep it, you want...
Okay, all right, yes, please, thank you. Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, I need for you to give your name and address. We're glad to have you here, thank you.
Yes, my name is Ronald Williams, and I live at 350 Euston Avenue, here in Meskeen, Michigan. I live in the Nelson Place area, where Mrs. Shepard is the commissioner. I also am here to represent Disability Connection. Our legal line, and I do a lot of volunteer work at Disability Connection. And they have, and we have an opportunity, and I have an opportunity to represent them in what they call, in a bike ride, it's called iRide. And it is geared toward calling attention to the people with disability and our challenges, and also to help individuals become more independent. The 240-mile bike ride, you know, during a period of four days, will be carried, going over 60 miles a day. And it's a challenge, but it's an also all-inclusive challenge for everyone involved. I'll be participating in it for four days. Some people participate in it for one, and some for just one day or one mile. But everybody's encouraged, this is an opportunity for us to be, to exhibit our independence. And what I would like to do is, I would like the commission to provide a small stipend, I guess, or give the Disability Connection a small gift, in order to help them hold the situation. I passed out the paperwork on there about exactly what it's about. And what it would do, actually, all, any money that is generated, would go to assist the local center of, the local center here is Disability Connection, in helping other people become more empowered. Because that's basically what they do there in Disability Connection. It helps empower people with disabilities, and aid them in being independent and on their own. We also have, have the opportunity to educate society about the disabilities of people like ourselves, and make more place, to make society more accessible to us. So if you would consider my request, I would really appreciate it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams, do you have an address?
Yes, I do.
Do you want to give it to me? Is it on here?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get that one, did I?
Disability Connection's address or my address, ma'am?
Okay, thank you, I do have it, sorry.
Okay.
Is your address Clay, or is that the...
No, no, sir. All the funds will go directly to Disability Connection.
And they're on PEC?
No, they're on Clay. No, they moved, they moved, we're now combined with United Way. We're now located in, now, with United Way.
With United Way and all the other non-profits.
Gotcha, I didn't know they moved in.
The old Chattock winner in Albert's.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conklin.
1504 Montgomery, Samantha Conklin. I just got a question. I think it was April 29th, me and my fiancee were pulled over. Doesn't have anything to do with what I'm up here for, but the police video is missing. He got his video, my video's gone. I called down to the police department, I waited three weeks for a response, nothing. They said they sent me something in the mail, I never got anything. So what happened to the Freedom of Information Act? Is that just gone? And the video is nowhere to be found. Officer Zanabel had a recorder in his car, I seen the screen about that big. On the video, it shows them illegally searching my vehicle, illegally breaking into my purse, my other belongings. They took me and my... They took me and my fiancee downtown. No charges were pressed, I was handcuffed to a wall with a chain about that big, I had to use the restroom. I wasn't under arrest, I was not put in a jail cell, but I had to be searched by another female to use the bathroom, after I was already searched, when they pulled us over. No charges were pressed. I mean, what is going on with the Muskegon Police Department? Do you know, Chief Colley Becker? Where's this video at? It was on record.
You're here to talk to the city commission?
I mean, it was on record, the whole time. I called down there last week, they told me there is no video. That's a lie.
Well, we'll follow up on it and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Antall?
Derek Antall, 1504 Montgomery. I came here tonight with the desire to address the commission on a couple of other issues that my attorney has advised me to hold off until the court proceedings. However, I would like to inform the council, March 30th, I began a poll that would include 20 officers from the Muskegon Police Department. I'm not going to disclose any names here, but we took a poll on 20 officers, 70% of which whom had not even seen what a medical marijuana card looks like. There are two separate cards, there's one for a patient, there's one for a caregiver. Each of these cards are of a different color.
One for a patient, one for a...
For a caregiver, somebody who grows plants for a patient who is unable to use them.
Yep, I just didn't hear it.
Now, as Samantha just informed you, we had been pulled over on April 25th, and the police video, which I received from the car that I was in, after watching the video, it took the officers, along with the we-met officer, seven to 10 minutes to decipher who was the patient, and who was the caregiver, and what card was what. Now, this is somewhat of a problem that's been occurring statewide, not just here in Muskegon, but it's becoming so bad in Muskegon County that we are now being referred to as a mistake by the law. Of those 20 officers polled, those 14, 14 out of the 20, had never seen a card, asked me to see mine, so they could clarify what the cards in fact looked like. Now, 18 of those 20 officers had admitted to not even having read the contents of this law. Now, with all the lawsuits going on across the state, whatever municipality it may be, they always revert back to the notion that, well, this is such a new law. We're two and a half, beyond two and a half years into this law, this is not new anymore. Okay, and I think that, I find it very dumbfounding, that the officers who we look at to protect and serve our community and uphold the laws, are attempting to do so with the law which they don't even know the contents of. Now, two weeks ago, we concluded our polling of the officers, and the last one that we spoke with, you know, every one of these officers, we carry around copies of the law, we always offer the officers a copy of the law. Not one single officer accepted a copy of the law from me. Now, the very last one that we polled, admitted that she has a copy of the law, however, she has not read it yet, because it's, quote, "too long." Now, I'm here tonight basically to ask the commission to address the police department, and figure out why these events keep happening. I mean, since our traffic stop, which again, no charges were ever filed, but after our traffic stop was made public through the Chronicle, we have had several of our members come forward, who have undergone very similar situations, where either their homes, or their vehicles, or both, had been illegally searched, by way of officers concluding that the medical marijuana card gave them probable cause to search the premises, even though there was no search warrants involved, there was no consent on anybody's behalf, these officers continue to harass the community and ignore the will of the people, that, you know, they just, they, either they don't care that this is a law, or it's just, you know, personal preferences, something they don't care to address. But it is becoming a very big issue with members of the community, who have in fact undergone this process, and obtained a medical marijuana card. Again, I find it very striking that these officers continue to receive compensation through taxpayer dollars, and yet they don't even know the contents of this law. I mean, it's a seven-page law, that, you know, I can read through it probably five times in a matter of 30 minutes, and to, you know, have these officers relay to me with admission that they have not even read this law, two and a half years into it, I mean, come on, guys, something's got to change here.
All right.
We've had several members come forward with these situations, who want to press charges, and we're trying to, trying to hold them off, and I've been asked to come here and represent the people, and ask that the city, you know, impose some kind of departmental meeting or something, to, you know, have an attorney or somebody of that sort go over the law with the officers, and maybe show them what the cards look like, so this isn't a continuing problem that's going to bring forward more lawsuits.
We will follow up on it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission tonight?
Sorry?
Oh, it's okay.
Just thank you, commissioners and mayor. I'm Kim and Cottis from Channel 97, DSC TV. We'd like to inform the public that we were notified by Comcast that they'll be moving the station from Channel 97 to Channel 96 as of June 28th, which will be the next commission meeting, and so I want you to keep your dials tuned to Channel 96 starting June 28th, and it's been a pleasure and a real privilege to serve the community, and we hope to keep up the good work. Thank you.
So you now represent Channel 96?
As of June 28th.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Carter?
Before I adjourn my normal adjournment, I'd like to, on behalf of myself, and I assume the city commission, would like to wish the mayor a happy birthday today.
Did you get the card? Oh!
And so, on that note, motion to adjourn.
Do you want a favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you.